Good evening, this calls. We have a whole meeting to order for champagne number one. We like highway, not in ourselves. It's Tuesday, September 6th, 2011, and time is six oh three. Uh, what call?
Davis.
Alex here.
Adams.
Here.
Anderson. Venzel.
Here.
Berksen.
Here.
Betts.
Here.
Carter. Toverts.
Frozen.
Ezri.
Here.
Overfield.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kirk.
Here.
Langheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGintz.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Moser. Nudo.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Clizzenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Ruzala.
Here.
Schrader.
Yes.
Wyler.
We have one comment. Safe approval of the minutes for the whole August 2nd, 2011. The board of commissioners, discussion. See you tomorrow in favor?
Aye.
The board of commissioners, Mr. Congressman, room. Safe approval of the agenda of the agenda. Who would it be Richard, that's second?
Yes.
And the second? Uh, Mr. Bresner, ten, you'd like to have item nine eight two be discussion only?
That's correct.
That nine eight two is supposed to plan the impact on the East Campus, still more than that. And you have a judge in the back. The discussion only. Any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, public participation, see the annual request. Should I look back to have any last word? Communications, only one communication, that is, uh, Mr. Wayne Wogan is, uh, uh, described for the this meeting now, um, so the patient, sometimes she just announces her name, but I believe you've had experience of this in the past, it's just been a while. So, Wogan, Ray, uh, Mr. Moser.
I think you probably noted in the newspaper that Wayne Buzzboom passed away last week. His wife was a county board member here for eight years. She said she hoped people that were here would remember her, her time of need. He was a great loss of a farmer.
All in favor?
Just a reminder that twenty-one of you signed up to order county board photos, uh, last, at the last county board meeting, if you could please pay by next Tuesday, uh, September thirteenth, twelve dollars. Thank you.
Who do we make an effort to? Stan James.
You know, you got the chair, the cash to the.
I stole the sixty cents.
Um, I went to a presentation last week and I thought it was, um, really interesting. The Daily Bread Soup Kitchen, um, it is a nonprofit organization that does not get any government funds, uh, they operate solely on donations. Um, they're feeding up to two hundred people a day, and if anyone's interested in helping, uh, participate, donating, uh, you can go to dailybreadsoupkitchen.com.
I'd like to add something to the board field. My wife has a volunteer at the Daily Bread Soup Kitchen every Tuesday, uh, spent six hours there working, and last Tuesday, they've served two hundred and ten plates, uh, at night. But it's a tremendously worthwhile, uh, organization, and, uh, they do it every single day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, on a Saturday and Sunday. And it's a, it's a wonderful, wonderful organization. Thank you.
Then?
I just wanted to ask to the board members and the public that there will be a memorial service on nine eleven at the Courthouse Plaza, uh, which is on Main Street in Manhattan. Um, the, uh, organ fire, the American program will get together and do a memorial service that day from two to four P M. Uh, we will have a reception for the police and fire, um, personnel immediately following the memorial service and on the post office building in Manhattan.
Thank you. Uh, last week, uh, about twenty-five to thirty elected officials from the state of Central Illinois traveled to, uh, Debut County, uh, attended a seminar at the Clinton landfill. The results of that is simply that, uh, I would say it was a consensus that, uh, to build a D C D landfill over our drinking water of all east central Illinois, which affects over seven hundred thousand residents, is, in my estimation, and the sense of the elected officials there, they're in the wrong place for a long time. Uh, there's a lot of skepticism about, uh, the claims made that this landfill could never be, and caused pollution, uh, to destroy drinking water. Uh, Mr. Steve Carter, uh, the city of Champaign has put together a report on that, and I'll bring it to the county board. It was a interesting, uh, four hours, uh, with a lot of, uh, let's say heated discussion concerning, uh, this landfill. But, uh, I am, I'm not going to answer any further detail at this point, but, uh, I'll get a report out to you back then.
Any other comments? Uh, finally, uh, please turn off the cell phones, if they're not silent, and the law of social services, justice, social services, and insurance.
We have one item on justice, and social services tonight, we have a resolution, Champaign County, joining the national ordinance, the remembrance of the first anniversary of September eleventh.
Now, I'd like to move as a resident, born and bred in North City, and again, before September eleventh, my wife and son were in the Trade Center buildings. Uh, that weekend, uh, my son took my wife on a birthday to North City, and part of that visit was to visit the Trade Center. It was, to this day, it's still very emotional for me, the scene that took place. Um, it's, uh, something that we need to remember and never forget, that there are those who would, uh, want to kill the life that we have built here in our country and the freedom that we have.
Move by Gerson, or second, second by Ezri. Is there any discussion? Just want to point out, everybody can read the resolution, but in addition to this, uh, resolution, E M A, which does need us to do this, also formally sign on to this national resolution, and also there's a number of emergency services items that are going to be coordinated with this remembrance, uh, with the, with the noon, noon central time remembrance here, a number of sirens are going to be going on, and, uh, E M A is also going to be coordinated with a number of churches, ringer bells, and things like that, so, so, uh, we're, we're also, uh, formally authorizing that, going to go forward in our, in our name on that, as well as the resolution, which you can read this packet, which is part of a nationwide resolution, and a nationwide movement being formed by, uh, Senator Lonberg of New Jersey. Are there any, any comments on this, uh, inside? Call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Hi, William, transportation wants to open up with the money reported both county and township, both people, tax claim for harvest, two thousand and eleven. Second by, by our first. Two by our first, second by, by our family. Don't we put discussion? Okay, saying, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any more comments? Now, what goes to county and district?
Good evening, uh, item B one, resolution, we're in contract for Stanton Road District, section ten, twenty-eight, nine seventy-one, O O B R. The letting for this, uh, this project was held, uh, this morning in my office. I've given you all a packet that includes a, a cover sheet from the plan set, so you know approximately where this, uh, project is located, as well as a tabulation bids, kind of an unusual project, and that we actually received seven bids on this project. It was a aluminum box culvert, uh, twenty foot four inches, um, across, and four foot six inches tall, so, uh, a little bit of a, of an unusual project for us. I would remind you that there was a resolution that was passed back in December, um, giving us the authorization to, uh, to appropriate the money from the county bridge funds, and this project was brought to you, uh, for approval at that time, as far as moving forward. Now I'm bringing it back to you, um, to approve the bids that were opened up this morning. Engineer's estimate of one fifty-three, seven forty-seven, um, and the goal bid from Jewel Construction was one fifty-three, three seventy-nine, so very close to the engineer's estimate, under the engineer's estimate, and I would ask that you approve that, uh, goal bid.
Move to approve.
Okay, it's been settled and approved, but we also put this question out. Ben?
Uh, yes, what is the timeline for this project?
It will be completed, uh, at a completion date of December the fifteenth of this year.
Anyone? It's got, um, I almost called you, Lorraine, but it's your name, it's Cam.
Uh, I just wanted to ask who the engineer was, how did we get the calculation of this?
Say it again.
Who the engineer, like calculates the.
I'm a construction area, I have a spring builder, the other ones that actually did the aluminum box culvert design, Contec, which is a company that, um, builds these type of structures, uh, actually manufactures them, um, so what happens is basically, the structure is delivered in pieces to the job site, it's the contractors and sponsor, I mean, it's kind of like a big director's set, or, uh, they can be together onsite, you can look at the incentive, uh, about how these things work. So this is about a two-week project at most, to, uh, to do something like this.
And so the contractor said, this is how much it costs to put the box together?
Right. Yes. Yeah, includes all the parts, labor, everything.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any more to call?
All right, next item is, uh, item C, petition requesting a resolution approving an appropriated funds, um, for a project in Philo Road District. This is a very small project, um, it, it came through a request from Brian Mahary to Philo, um, it's along the Umbra River, uh, just north and west of Philo, um, he's basically got a bridge where the riprap underneath the bridge is washing out, um, underneath it, and you can, you can start to see some of the piles underneath the, uh, abutments, uh, due to the fact that the water's been high and the riprap isn't holding, so basically, um, this eighty-five hundred dollars, um, is to pay a contractor, almost can place riprap underneath the bridge, because they've got to get up underneath there and put riprap underneath an existing bridge, so, um, it's actually for a repair of the structure to, um, stop it from eroding along the lines.
So, can I, uh, wow? Second by, uh, Stan James.
Any provision, any, any, for that, which was not in the.
Yeah, we're, we're going to ground the riprap. The old riprap that was put in there wasn't grounded right, they basically threw old concrete chunks in there, you know, it wasn't real riprap that was placed in there compact, and it'll be grounded on top of that, so we put a slurry seal on top of it to kind of hold it all together.
Alan?
Is it acceptable to the mover and the second, or can we ask that, uh, we're replacing item four, be replaced with a bearing when this comes to full work?
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any more to call?
That's all I have.
Okay, the thing now, this is the highway transportation. And, uh, we've got, um, eight, um, B one, uh, or the center of London.
I'd be one, uh, you know the color.
Oh, that was our, please. Uh, uh, eight six.
This evening, we have the long-awaited presentation, this called the Stormwater Management Plan for Burns and Clans and Associates. Welcome to your desk.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Chris Billing with Burns, Clans and Associates, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to present, uh, the results of our study and analysis, and then to answer questions as you may have, for as long as you have questions to ask. So, you all do have a packet, um, that's been left for you, that's basically the presentation, how we'll be going through that in a little bit of detail, uh, and hopefully quickly enough that we'll provide plenty of opportunity, uh, to respond to your questions. You do have eleven by seventeen size, uh, reduced size copies of all these exhibits in your handouts, and that may be easier to follow through and looking at it in detail as we go through. The first page, I, I wanted to basically recap, do a very quick summary of the stormwater management plan that was prepared in two thousand and six, uh, which kicked off basically the construction in the, the northern watershed area with the Ileas, uh, with the, uh, fleet maintenance project first, and then, uh, the reuse coming about of the old, of the former nursing home, uh, which became Ileas. Uh, that, uh, the one page here basically is a quick summary of, of that stormwater management report, uh, which has been okayed and, you know, accepted by the city of Urbana. We have two watersheds. Maybe I can carry this around a little bit. Okay, we have two watersheds on the site, basically the, there's eleven point three acres on the western portion, which was the fleet maintenance area and the tributary area south of that, currently is ball fields, but, uh, is, is campus property. And then we had an eastern watershed, basically area two, which rep from here over to, uh, your eastern boundary lines, uh, down here's the watershed comes down through Humane Society, the, um, uh, youth detention facility, and over here, kind of along the north side of the adult detention facility back here, basically a lot of this back area here in the very center and northern portion of the property, uh, of the, of the watershed. So we had, um, that was about thirty-one point eight acres. The, uh, basically, we, we go through in order to determine, according to Urbana's regulations, the release rate, we look at what the agricultural flow rate conditions are, and I've summarized that, peak flow rate from the west watershed of about sixteen and a half cubic feet per second, and from the, the eastern area two, about thirty-one point eight cubic feet per second. Under the proposed conditions that, uh, the plan called for, basically constructing some stormwater detention basins, a box culvert, um, type storm sewer because of the flat grades, uh, there are three outlets to the watershed, this one, a fifteen inch storm sewer has been constructed as part of that initial phase of construction, there is a, uh, two storm sewers across Main Street, as well that service, as presently, presently serve and has served for a long time, as outlets for, uh, this overall watershed. The idea is to build attention, connect all these outlets together, uh, take drainage then from both, uh, the eleven point three acres and the, uh, uh, the eastern watershed to the thirty-one acres, and outlet them, um, outlet them through the three outlets. Basically, if, um, area one, the fleet maintenance area, incorporated within the assumptions of that, we have about a seventy-two percent imperviousness for this watershed, as you can see right now, that was, that, that looks toward future conditions, so we build something that's going to serve your needs, not just today, but for your plan improvements. So, right now, we certainly don't have seventy-two percent imperviousness, uh, in the northern area with fleet maintenance, we do approach that, but, uh, at the, in the future, the southern area could be developed too, with that amount of imperviousness, and that's based, that's incorporated within the, the analysis, analysis and calculations. The sixteen and a half acres took basically the larger area and looked at it in two segments. About sixteen and a half acres would be the western portion, including Art Bartel. Um, the assumption made there is about a sixty-five percent imperviousness for that whole area. At the present time, there's less than that. If you recall earlier on, we had a, an exhibit that basically looked at the redevelopment of the, the nursing home site, it had additional parking lots, things like that, so it'd hit, it would increase imperviousness, so we took that, basically more intense usage, and said that would apply to this whole, uh, sixteen and a half acre, so, that would be about sixty-five percent imperviousness. And then the eastern portion, about fifteen point three acres, uh, the assumption is that this would become about fifty-five percent impervious. There's areas over here on the far eastern side, there's probably not development anticipated in that for a good long time, if, if ever, well, none of us will be here, uh, when that happens, so not, all of the area wouldn't become totally, you know, as impervious as these western portions do. That did, that did include adding about two and a half acres of imperviousness, uh, to reach that fifty-five percent. At the time of the study, that watershed was less than forty percent impervious, so, those are the assumptions that went on, uh, in the background of the analysis. The, uh, stormwater detention is outlined before, we have the fleet maintenance ponds here that have been dug, that was about four, five point four acre feet. In the future, when the box culvert would be extension, extended, that would be about another zero point four acre feet, and as, as areas over here were to develop a future detention, a small amount of point nine acre feet, and therefore total about six point seven acre feet, a stormwater detention volume was needed to be able to, actually that would even address the hundred-year, hundred-year storm. The city of Urbana's stormwater management ordinance just requires you to do the difference between the five and the five-year storm release rate up to the fifty-year storm, but they still want to chart where the hundred-year water is. Doesn't all have to be in the basin, in what was proposed before, all of that hundred-year flow was managed within the basins, uh, taking those outlets into account. The very bottom of the page, uh, again, is another summary out of that report, basically just to show you the area, area one and area two, what the one through one hundred-year peak, peak flow rates are, and those, those served as the basis then for where we went, uh, for our analysis for today, for what we're, what we're reviewing and what we're looking at. This exhibit quickly shows you basically what your drainage infrastructure is today within these watersheds, stormwater detention basins that have been built, a little piece of, of the box culvert was extended underneath the, uh, the parking area, uh, we have, I think the, the watershed limits are shown on your map, outlined in green, there is a, there's an eighteen inch storm sewer that comes down from Main Street around to the backside of the, you know, former nursing home, all of the, the nursing home area immediately behind it over the years, over the years of additions and all, did have some storm sewer connected to it, a little bit of storm sewer coming up, a twelve inch size up from the south, and then you have essentially drainage culverts underneath roadways and swales, most of the roadside swales and ditches that direct water throughout. In the last few years, there's been a notable amount of imperviousness, has been added new buildings and new paving, uh, been added to this area, and I know that's confounded the, uh, some flooding problems that occur in this area, as there's basically overland swales and then a twelve inch storm sewer, which regulates the outflow from all of that. Basically, your existing conditions, and that's what we started with, an understanding of that, to take, to look at two different approaches to dealing with your stormwater I'll put the next exhibit up and go right to one of the two approaches. Okay, if anyone had any particular questions, feel free to stop me as we go along, and if it's easy to answer, is probably the most expedient way to make sure that you, um, have a, a good understanding of what we're, what we're doing as we go along.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question about the status quo. Can you confirm, I'm looking at the outlets from the existing drainage basins, and my, from what I can tell from the plan, it looks like the north basin actually drains into the south basin?
Yes.
And then the south basin drains out to the west, is that.
That is correct. There's a thirty-six inch storm sewer under, under here, which is underneath the ponds, and, so they're essentially hydraulically connected, they look like two ponds, but they really function as one pond, really.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the, the first approach we looked at was to continue in the direction of the stormwater management plan, and take a storm sewer extension approach to providing the drainage that you would need. Um, let me review, we did cut the watershed up into a bunch, a number of subwatersheds to look at the directions of flow and where we would have to serve these various little, you know, one point two acres, one point six six acres, three point two seven acres, so we looked, uh, at a much smaller refined detail of where water actually flowed, as it was outlined in the original, you know, essentially as it flows today, you know, how your drainage plan has been developed over the years. We show this, uh, extension, the concrete box over here to actually just short of Art Bartel, over on the west side of Art Bartel. We do need to make some drainage connections for our outlets then. Um, up here, a twenty-four inch connection to this twenty-four inch storm sewer across Main Street, a twelve inch storm sewer connection to, uh, this eighteen that goes across Main Street, and from there, come back, build a thirty-six and a thirty across Art Bartel, and bring in a new storm sewer, southward, all along, just parallel with Art Bartel, very close to the pavement. The idea then is we're going to leave the existing eighteen inch storm sewer in that comes along the west side of Art Bartel, seems to be functioning, and it has a capacity of, well, under gravity flow conditions, about seven C F S, so it didn't seem reasonable to dig that up and replace it with something bigger, we will utilize its capacity. will utilize its capacity and therefore only have to build enough capacity for what we, for what we're missing yet. So we build a twenty-four inch storm sewer over here, and the design of the storm sewer is predicated on gravity flow, at least a five year storm flow rate. And then we know under, under storm conditions where storm sewers are surcharged, we know we can get more water through them because there's more head pushing the, pushing the water through. So we, so we size these sewers at least five year gravity flow and to be sure we get more than the fifty year storm flow rate under surcharged conditions to take them through the pipes. If we, when we get storms, regardless of what size we design for, we'll always get a storm bigger at some point in time. And we know we can get a little bit more capacity out of storm sewers, but then we know we start backing up a little bit within low areas, but it's, it's areas that are kind of now presently floating, so that'd be along your road corridors and all. But as that grade line comes up, we still, we still push well more flow through those, through those storm sewers than we do in the gravity flow conditions. Anyway, twenty-four inch storm sewer coming down and then a network essentially of fifteen inch storm sewers to interconnect all of these other sub-basins. Once, once we get in and pick up with fifteen inch storm sewers, all those other areas in the, you now have the backbone of your storm sewer system to serve all of this area too, on both sides that you can connect to. Basically, we relieve, we take off all this other flow off of that eighteen, the eighteen, that existing eighteen, then can actually serve this area on the backside of the Eileas building. Yes?
Well, just plan, assume that the drainage to the softball field, south of the Eileas building, and to the east of that, that's also served as drainage, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. This area is served right now, if, at some point in time, this area, this drainage does come this way around the building and up into the pond directly around the west side of the fleet maintenance building. So, in the future, and I don't know that there's any, you know, any, any plans for this, but at some point, at such time in the future, the drainage outlet for that is this direction around the west side. That major watershed divide between Area One and Area Two is kind of here, we don't, we're trying, we're not intending to take water kind of from Area One all the way around and take the long way to come around. That basically lays out the storm sewer improvement that would be necessary. The other thing, we, looking at the utilities in place, we do have sanitary sewer that also comes down, parallel with the existing storm sewer on the west side of Art Bartel. We stay, we stay away from that sanitary sewer that serves us the spine coming onto the south. There is a water main farther to the east, which, which makes us have to build this storm sewer essentially a few feet off of Art Bartel, but there's a small corridor in there that we, using trench sheeting and stuff, have to go by, you know, a trench box, we need to put that, we need to put that in. The other, the other thing to note, the storm sewer is just a little bit, it's running about two feet above the sanitary sewer portion, and that sanitary sewer is pretty deep. So, in the few places where we have to get across it to provide outlets to watersheds, that's possible to do. It's also running deep enough though, for the most part, I think we'll, the new storm sewer will be below the level of that water main. So if we do have to get closer than ten feet to it, we can still keep a eighteen inch vertical separation with the water main, which is something that we have to do too. So, it's basically the only corridor that seemed to make sense reasonably in order to be able to locate that main spine to take the water northward. But then, once we do that, all of these sub-areas back here can drain out, they'll still be draining out the twenty-four, or the new twenty-four and the old eighteen, go northward with the interconnect up here. We did stuff across with a thirty inch over here to get under Art Bartel. I haven't shown any extension of storm sewer over here, this two point seven nine, three point one nine, and one point five seven acres, all drains and comes this direction. That size to be able to accept this runoff if storm sewers ever would be extended there, but there's no plan, and neither this or the other plan, to do any, any real change in development there. So the outlet is provided by this and interconnected, and we'll be ready at some future point, some years down the road, whatever, if there's ever a redevelopment or expansion in those watersheds down there. I've put together, I think the next sheet in the set is a cost estimate for this option. I'm going to go through as many items and be as consistent between this and the next approach that we take too. So, I'll go through that, down there, and given, there's twenty items there with quantities and unit prices that we utilized in putting together this estimate of costs, and we come down to something on just about four hundred thousand dollars in order to run all of this sewer, all of, extending the box over and then run all this main storm sewer that you see, and repairing, repairing the surface basically with lawn, which is what's there, what's there today, or pavement, obviously. So before I start with the other approach, let me see if there's some questions I can answer.
I'm not confused, how long does this project take, take, considering average weather conditions?
I would say we're probably, assuming, assuming rather average weather conditions, you're probably talking about two months of construction. Okay, you've got to expect a little bit of rain and whatnot in there. But there's nothing, and there's nothing tricky, so it's, you know, straightforward storm sewer, all, all means and methods essentially that are not unusual and very typical for the style of construction. Yes?
Now, the eighteen inch sewer line, the, what you've managed, there existing cracks or is it plugged up? When we have like the one hundred rain, the one hundred year rainfall that we had a couple of years ago that everything got flooded, is, is the capacity of that basically reasonable? Or, what I'm trying to say is that, what I would rather see is, you probably put a forty-eight inch pipe since you're already digging the hole, and leaving the existing eighteen inch and then also putting in the twenty-four inch. Because what you're indicating is the capacity of the eighteen with the capacity of four should be enough in the next five years. But what I'm saying is if this development is probably going to be happening, maybe not within the next five years, wouldn't it be better now that if we're digging up the pipes, put in a larger pipe, perhaps a forty-eight, four feet, instead of, you know, what we have here, eighteen and twenty-four, which is forty-two capacity?
Okay, addressing your first point, we, we did not take a look at the existing conditions of the sewer. That eighteen could be televised and we could, we could assess the condition of the eighteen. That certainly would be, would be a reasonable item to undertake if we think that there's even a potential concern with the structural integrity or capacity or anything of that sewer. I have not ever heard any reports that it's had a problem, but if, if staff, you know, can, can point out that there's something to be concerned about the integrity of that existing sewer, then by all means, we should investigate that and make sure. Worst comes to worst, if there's a few cracks and dislodged pieces of pipe, it would be possible, rather than to dig it up and fix it or replace it, we could, we could put a liner in that. That's a, that's a fairly established technique, it's been around now, going on probably thirty years or so, and it's used all over town, all over Champaign-Urbana, the university campus, I know, that we use, do lining of sewers. So we can restore the integrity of the pipe without having to dig it up by lining the inside of that, if that were necessary. To address the other point you make, the, the design assumptions I made in sizing the capacity of these sewers and projecting the sizes we need is based on, again, going back to the original stormwater management report of essentially a build-out development of, you know, seventy-two percent impervious and sixty, you know, fifty-five percent impervious. So it was, it's predicated on those developments happening. It's, the, the sizes, the capacities I'm proposing are not just to meet what you see today, but it's to meet the projected demand, the projected runoff that we were expecting in that report originally, the two thousand and six report. So by putting that in, we have, we, we're actually putting in more capacity than we need today, but we're putting capacity for the future for what those expectations were. Yes?
How long do you expect this by your program? In your opinion, will this work?
Certainly.
It'll solve the problem, in your opinion?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the size of the piping along the north side, is that also twenty-four or is it forty-two, the one at the top?
This piece here?
Yes.
Okay, that's that, that's that four foot by six foot concrete box that was identified in the report. So, actually, in the report in two thousand and six, it identified that box and, because it was connecting your three outlets together. The report, the report just indicated that additional storm sewer would have to be extended, you know, within the watershed, without laying it out. What we've done now, basically, continuing on from that, is then, is now to, to lay out this piping arrangement and to see what sizes of pipe we need. So yes, that's that six foot by four foot box that's laid in a fairly flat grade in order to make the appropriate connections, these three outlets to the watershed. And again, across the top, we come down and we dig up a little piece of the eighteen in order to get around, at a place where we can cross Art Bartel. We're putting a thirty-six inch there, we're going across the street with a thirty inch because now we have the capacity to do these other future watersheds in the future if we ever need it. And then when we build the twenty-four south, then that's what we need to pick up these, these watersheds. And this one, this five point five six acres, which is the backside essentially of the Eileas, that's what, that watershed by itself alone is what served, what goes through the eighteen, the existing eighteen. All the other watersheds essentially feed into the new pipe. Yes?
I don't even know how to really formulate this and sound intelligent, but I really don't understand a lot of these pipes. But, just looking at the colored drawing of the existing drainage infrastructure and the proposed drawing of the new pipeline through, they seem to follow a similar course.
Exactly.
And I'm wondering, A, why, and B, I've just never heard of flooding in this area, so I'm wondering, the purpose of this as opposed to what you're saying on the other side, the western part of this that doesn't have current drainage, current?
Okay, the, the area, before some of this other development that's, that's happened, you know, there were, there was some periodic, you know, reports of periodic flooding and whatnot, and I think it's certainly exacerbated now that we have more acres of imperviousness. We, we, just in this development area here alone, we, we added about one and a, well, nearly one and a half acres of imperviousness between the roof areas and the new pavement that have gone in, in this area right there. So, the, one of the basic problems with, with the drainage system that's there, we rely on, other than some twelve inch storm sewers trying to, trying to get flow, an eight inch here, trying to get flow to that existing eighteen, we just have a system of roadside ditches and some culverts. Most of the culverts are fifteen inch diameter, but none of them have great capacity. They, they would serve okay for a routine storm, a large storm event, that backs up and floods, you know, the road and the ditches and won't fit through those culverts. And so, we leave, we leave the roadside ditches and the culverts in place, still, to help move, to help move water around, but we bring the new storm piping system through essentially that same corridor. It's about the only real available corridor left to get, to get from the north side, from Main Street, back to the back. That's about the only really alignment we, we have, and in many respects, that was, this area slopes, the western area of the watershed slopes toward Bartel, and this eastern area bit slopes westward toward Bartel. So that's kind of the low area, and that's what makes sense that drainage infrastructure is, and that's why the existing pattern is there, and that's why it makes sense to also put the new storm sewer there, because it's, it's kind of the lower ground.
Sorry, are you done, Carol?
Go ahead, I'm not sure.
Okay. I just wanted, it would be useful to clarify, I want to, the existing green infrastructure that's shown on the status quo picture is preserved in this. I think that was, because you're not removing all this.
No.
I mean, most is staying, right?
Exactly.
If the green lines aren't on the, aren't on the...
Right, right, yeah, no, I...
But if you could clarify that a little bit, how much of this is staying here? I think people are thinking, you're taking all this out, you're pushing it back.
Okay, all, yes, all of that existing infrastructure is staying in place. Exact, I did, but it's not, since it's there, it's not part of the proposed plan, so I didn't, I didn't highlight that on this, on this exhibit. This just depicts the new, the new infrastructure to be extended. But yes, all of the roadside ditches, all of those culverts under the road that are existing now, still will stay in place, and they still will serve a useful function to get the water, to get the surface water to, to this storm sewer system.
But that's not the case in the second approach, which you brought up, like some of the existing infrastructure has to be removed?
A little bit, I'm, I'm actually using as much of that existing infrastructure in the second approach as well.
Okay.
Yeah, to the, to the maximum extent we can.
You're going to address that when we talk about the second approach, don't you regret anything?
Yes, I will. Okay. Any other, and it's okay to ask questions on the previous something if it comes to mind, so that's okay, but if we're, if there are no other questions at this point in time, I'll go on to the, the other alternative approach. I don't know if that's possible for everybody to see, again, I hope you could follow along on your exhibit. It's not very straight. If it's not level, I won't have water running in the right direction, so. Okay, this was a, this is a best management practices approach at dealing with our, the new drainage conditions for this watershed. Again, we, under the present conditions, this western, this Area One, the eleven point three acres, basically has all the stormwater detention volume already constructed in the original ponds that we have over here beside, in front of the fleet maintenance building. All the stormwater detention volume is over there, that's been constructed to date, and that's on the order of about eighty percent or so of all the stormwater detention that was identified in that two thousand and six report. So, most of the volume's already built there on this side. So you won't, I, I haven't proposed doing any of the green infrastructure approaches, these best management practices over here, because this waters, this piece, this watershed is pretty well served with, with stormwater management, as it is today. All the problems are, the flooding and the drainage problems that have been expressed by staff has occurred over in the Area Two, these two watersheds here, and that's, that's why... And that's, that's why this approach came over and addressed how to get the water out of here and interconnected to, and that's why you'll see most of the work is over here in this area two, these two watersheds. There is one other important aspect. I still have a much smaller, but I still have a drainage connection for what we're doing over here from the north end of Art Bartel. I still have a drainage connection with just a twenty-four-inch diameter storm sewer pipe over to interconnect with those, those stormwater detention basins to the west, because we need to still use the volume, some of the volume that was built over there for what we're doing. It's, it's only a twenty-four-inch diameter storm sewer and not a four-by-six-foot box, so it's much less expensive interconnection. But if I don't interconnect them, then I don't have the advantage to use all three of the outlets that this overall watershed has available to it and the stormwater detention volume that's already been built over there. So there's still an interconnection, but not the big box, much smaller. What we, we have a palette or a variety of best management techniques that we essentially go through and, and build on, along the same spine, the same Art Bartel, the low area where we can see our existing drainage infrastructure. That still is the key for the alignment of how we interconnect everything. But the overall goal is basically twofold. One, let's change some of the characteristics of the watershed so that we can reduce the amount of runoff that we're going to get in a storm event. The thing is, we'll see the biggest impact in very small storm events and very little runoff. In the very large storm events, we will see a little attenuation, but when we, when we get a half an inch of rain or quarter of an inch of rain, you might almost see no runoff coming out. But if we get ten inches of rain, there's only so much, only so much water that the plants in the ground and also can. So what we've done is a variety of things to actually create some stormwater detention, interconnect some stormwater detention, but change the perviousness essentially of, of what we're dealing with. So basically, we have that big, well, it's mound of topsoil, but we have the, the big hill, which, you know, will get runoff off of that because of the steepness of the slope. If we change that to an upland grass prairie, we can, we can reduce the volume in this, you know, this two-point-one-eight acre watershed here, so that's certainly a little bit more than, than half of that. I've got on the, on the, so that's the only, the only area of upland grass prairie that I'm indicating. It certainly can be put anywhere, but that seems to be a very good application in this regard. We've got some bioswales that are noted in the dark green, which basically follows the roadside ditches and, and ditches in existing swale areas that we have now. We want to change the conditions of those standard roadside ditches and, and create bioswales so that those will be able to actually soak up a bit more water than they do under just the grass conditions. We basically are still using the fifteen-inch culverts that go under the roads as the water to move around, move the water around from watershed to watershed. Uh, there is some around the salt dome, some more standard, just salt tolerant vegetative swales and grasses, because we know we have salt that we have to deal with in that area. So some of the bioswale type plans aren't going to be as tolerant of salts, you know, so immediately, we have some of those in there. We have two pods here where we have two large areas. I actually want to dig down, create a little bit of volume in there, but those will become wetlands. Those, so we will have, and I think I do have, I put a, basically a water surface elevation of seven-thirty-one, which will be a couple of feet below existing perimeter grain, and a water surface elevation of seven-twenty-eight, again, essentially, a couple of feet below existing elevation there now, to actually take that down and then create, create some wetland conditions. So we will have some, some amount of open water, the actual, the actual open water, the water in the wetlands, there may be some deep pockets here and there. Most of it will be probably less than a foot to, just a little over a foot. Most of the wetland area won't be that big, but we will have some areas of a little bit deeper, maybe a couple of feet deep of water depth, just to have open water there. What that does is it gives us a wider variety of, of conditions to grow different types of water plants and stuff within there and then on the bank immediately adjacent to the water. So we have, again, basically two wetland basins. We have some, I call it rain garden areas, a little bit that's, that's leading just to the west of this one wetland, some rain garden then up along the north and along Main Street, taking some of the flow from here, all of this, all of what are coming down this bioswale, and we still have to get underneath in storm sewer. And as we're heading here, north of the parking lot out in front of Ileas there, we want to take that elevation actually down several feet, about five or six feet. The bottom will still be low, or was to be dry, I'm sorry, so we'll, I'm still calling that not a wetland, still calling that more of a rain garden condition. But what will happen is this water, you know, since the capacity of the twenty-four is much more restricted than the six-foot by four-foot box, is we will have an opportunity for water to actually come up from the bottom. Certainly, the front end of the building all drains by surface into that, but we'll actually have an opportunity as, as a hydraulic grade line comes up in that storm sewer, that this area will fill with water and then with the wetland, with the, with the rain garden type plants we have in there, we'll have an opportunity to soak up a bit more of, of water in that. Yes?
These wetlands are always going to be wet, right?
Correct.
Is there any mosquito baiting or anything like that as part of this?
I haven't included any, that could be an ongoing maintenance, but ongoing operational thing to check, to check into. I don't, I don't believe there's been a really reported mosquito problem that's gone on in the wetland that's over in the park to the east, the big, the big wetland basin. And so could we have some mosquitoes? Yes, possibly. But what, what we have in the wetland is not going to sit there and not flow. That's usually what breeds the mosquitoes, is when you've got to have the stagnant water. Actually, all of these watersheds, it's the other thing, this watershed to the south comes, feeds this way. You get, I'm gonna, I'm bringing a pipe across the road here, and we'll take about half of this three-acre tract here and, and direct that through this, through this wet basin. We'll have, we'll then send all this water along this swale through this one. So what, what we really have is anytime it rains, we actually have flow-through conditions. We will, we will push the water, this water, we have a little over five acres or so, seven and a half acres, I think, actually flowing through this wetland. We have that plus this, we have twelve, fifteen acres feeding water through this wetland. So we will have, we will have water moving through them. The water level will rise and fall a bit, and that, that will, that will attenuate a lot of the mosquito problem when you have water actually moving and fluctuating. Yes?
What can we expect in the way of flooding on Art Bartel Road?
Can we expect flooding on Art Bartel Road? We're going to improve this ditch that you see there now, widen it out, deepen it. I do have included a small underdrain, essentially, the, the underdrain that's listed in the cost is basically from here underneath to connect to it, to make sure that we move, we move water through that, through the swale and through the underdrain as well. Up through, up through about that fifty-year storm, you shouldn't, you shouldn't see, I mean, you'll see water within, within the swale, the bioswale, but you should not see water up, reaching Art Bartel Drive, certainly. No. Well, up through the fifty-year, it will be, will down be below, yeah. Well, beyond that, you, you actually now have a little bit wider area here, and you will get outside of the swale, and I don't think it will, I don't think you'll see it ponded up over Art Bartel to any, you know, certainly not on the high part. Art Bartel's a little bit lower back here as you go, as you're coming through here, it's kind of, kind of top of the hill. So that's one of the reasons we sort of, in putting this bioswale through, we're kind of grinding through that little bit of crest to make sure that the water won't flow northerly.
Why is this, the second one, the best practices?
That's, that's a, best management practices is a new, a newer name that describes the use of these alternative type approaches to the standard, the standard drainage, standard swale, standard storm sewer type approach, which is, which is essentially the first one.
Is there some reason why they're better than the fact that they're cost a whole lot more?
Their, their, their best management practices is a way to do something different with water than drain it in an accelerated fashion downstream. So it's, it's, it's part of a larger, more environmentally conscious movement that says we're not going to accelerate stuff and get it, you know, causing streams downstream to, you know, flash rise and flood and whatnot. We're trying to hold things back and somewhat more mimic, well, the natural conditions, even before it was agricultural land, the more mimic the natural conditions that everywhere along the way, water was slowed and the peaks were attenuated. And, I mean, in this community alone, you had, when the first settlers came, the Boneyard Creek stopped being any kind of identifiable ditch system on Lincoln Avenue, west of Lincoln, it was, it was just prairie. And of course, now you can see the Boneyard Creek through the campus and City of Champaign, now it's a big gigantic waterway. And that's all, that's all from the standard applications of drainage, let's get those big peak storms off. And we need conveyance ways, whether it's sewers or ditches or swales or small river systems or something like that, so.
Are there greater upkeep costs this second one with the risk of drainage, what limits the efficiency?
Yes, um, yes, there are. I mean, standard, standard drainage systems in storm sewers, they need, need maintenance as well, but those are, need rather, especially bigger sized pipe, need less, certainly need less maintenance operating. So operating cost and maintenance cost for standard storm sewer systems, underground piping systems are pretty small. If you had ditches and waterways, there's maybe a little bit more maintenance having to go with, you know, repairing riprap that's failed and, and mowing and things like that.
Can you, can you quantify your cost difference between this one and this one in terms of the acres?
Um, the best management practices, practices approach would certainly have higher, markedly higher operating and maintenance costs, especially for the first handful of years. You're, you're trying to get different types of vegetation established. So I've put in, in the cost for that, a, some seeding, but a higher level of also putting plugs in to try to get, try to get these different plant species established, you know. But that doesn't mean that maybe for the first, first year, you may have ten, twelve thousand dollars worth of somebody's effort to go out and essentially maintain, pull, you know, essentially kill weeds that are coming, because the standard weeds are, you know, will, are very vigorous in their growth. Okay, so very quickly weeds will grow and all. These, these other plants that we're talking about using would take a little bit longer to establish. They will have extensive root systems, and once established, they should hold the weeds and, and other things pretty well at bay. But it will take, it will take a couple of years of, of a little bit more effort to make sure that they're, they're getting established. It's not like, you know, it's not like you do your lawn, it's not like throwing seed out and watering, and it's, that's really all you have to do. You know, it will be a little bit of-
How often do you have to retrench with, with sediments building up with the water running?
The, with these plants, once they're established, as long as you don't have any other areas, you know, if you have areas where you're doing construction and you have erosion occurring, those will deposit within your, you know, within your swale areas and your rain gardens and all. But really, once everything's established, you should have really very slow deposition of, of sediments. I would say most rain gardens and all figure, figure they can go a good ten years or maybe fifteen years without extensive, before their first really extensive maintenance.
So okay, let's say you have fifty-year or a hundred-year rain, you aren't going to have a huge amount of sediment moving during that timeframe?
Not, not really. The, most of your sediment actually occurs in your smaller routine storms, because they happen all the time. If you get your fifty-year rain, you have some sediment, but it only happens, you know, once every fifty years. So on the grand scheme of things, your sediment transport that you need to be cognizant of, it occurs actually on your, you know, your, every little, you know, half-inch rain, one-inch rain, inch and a half rain that you get routinely over the course of a year, you get more sediment off of those little storms than the, one time in twenty-five years or one time in fifty years. I mean, that will move sediment, but you just don't get those rainstorms then off. Yes?
Your best management, but more expensive plan takes how many acres away from us on our east campus?
Oh. I'm, I'm thinking when I kind of added that up, that was something on the order of fifteen acres or something like that, twelve to fifteen acres. I don't, I didn't, I didn't put that, yeah, I didn't write that down. But it does, yes, it, I mean, it does take all of these, all of these areas here, it does, it does put them to use, so it takes them out of other potential uses, yes. Yes?
In comparison to the first plan, the second plan, how long will it take from start to finish?
The second plan probably would take about, about the same amount of time. There's a bit, certainly less piping and stuff to put in, but you have different sort of crews that are going to be working on these establishment of these rain gardens and wetland area basins and bioswales and landscaping. So time from start to finish, between the two is probably fairly comparable. One thing, we will have more, we have to make sure we want to do it, you know, all, all the amount of planting here at maybe the most opportune time of year.
That was my other follow-up question. So this project probably would not start until potentially spring? And then also, in order to get this established, plants take time, and I know you said you're going to have a strong root system, but would you say that this project really wouldn't be mature for between three to five years, or do you think it would be sooner than that?
Either project, because there's some, there's some underground, actually could even start somewhat in the winter, early spring. You can, you could do underground work throughout a good part of the winter, actually. But the landscaping, whether it's, whether it's this plan and we have to restore the lawn, that would be in the spring. And certainly when we're doing this variety of plants here, for most all of those, I think spring is a better time to do those as well. So we're talking about opportune time is, I'll say, late April to mid-June, sometime in, in that timeframe. Yes, it will take, this will take, just restoring lawn, a good season, making sure you're watering and stuff, essentially, a year, you know, maybe the following spring or something like that, a little more than a year, to, to really have things pretty well healed that you don't have to worry about. The opportunity for doing this variety of plants will take heavier maintenance for a good year, a little bit less for a second year, and certainly into a third year to really, to really make sure that the, the plant mix that we want to put out there is established. Definitely. Yes?
What's your, your best guess on the differences in the-
What's your, your best guess on the differences in the sanitary district discharge fees between the two approaches? I assume one of the things that we're going forward best managed is reduce runoff. So is that, that's going to reduce the amount of fees we're paying, right?
Well, right now, right now, the sanitary district, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't enter anything. You're not, you're not discharging anything to sanitary. All this is a runoff and stormwater. But what you may be talking about, though, I know the city of Urbana is looking into a stormwater manage, or stormwater utility fee and rate structure. I know they're a bit behind the city of Champaign in their planning and adoption and all. So, so far, irrespective of what you do here, from what I've heard from the city of Urbana's presentation, and I don't want to speak for them, because that's only, that's only 25% of the way along. But they're going to, I understand, they're basically going to charge you based on the amount of impervious area you have. So unless they also give you credit for doing some of these BMPs, these attenuation things, if they don't specifically give you credit for that, you're still going to be charged, whether you do this or do this, your bill, your bill to the city might be exactly the same if they don't incorporate giving you credit for doing this. Now, these things also will, these BMPs do also address stormwater quality. And I didn't mention that before, because we're looking at the flooding and looking at the quantity. These things obviously will improve water quality over just straight drainage to a storm sewer system. And I don't know the extent to which Urbana might incorporate water quality in how much they would, you know, charge everybody, you know, including the, for every site within, within the city.
These swales, I'm just wondering, what would be the response to them? We've just had almost two months ago, the hot weather, 96, 98 degrees, with more to come than predicted over the years. How would these swales respond to that? Would it be better to go with a, just, I think rather than to worry about what would, what would take place with drought over a summer?
What you'd have, again, if we go a couple of years down the road and these plants are pretty well established, they do have pretty extensive root systems. So they may, they may, you know, die back and brown up a little bit, but those roots are still, are still going. As soon as you get any bit of water again, those, those plants, once established, will come back. The wetland plants might be a little bit different situation, because they do, they do want to have that higher level of water for those, that wetland area. And so if you had a two-month drought, again, you'll, and the wetlands dried up. And wetlands do, on the long run, the plants will generally be just fine. But immediately, when you get a rainstorm, they may not be functioning until, until they can essentially come back to life again, if you have.
But that, that won't slow the water?
The, yeah, that's, that's true. It will, it will have a whole lot less impact on slowing the water and will have a noticeable impact on not improving the water quality as long as those plants are dormant or so. That's, that's correct. So you do have that window of time. Kind of the same situation even in the winter, everything dies back too. So over the course of the winter, they're, the roots are still taking up some moisture and all. So they're still alive, but the, the impacts of what you see these plants, see these things do in the middle of winter, and then if you have very dry conditions, it's certainly different than when you have your typical spring-fall average, average moisture conditions and temperatures, yes.
Mr. Prudential, Mary? Yeah, this is following along with Mr. Richard's question and the future, and a tax on this perhaps. What I thought I heard you say when we transitioned from this one to this one was that this would reduce the previous, this, uh, rate of areas. Is that not the case? Would this have an better score in that kind of analysis than this?
Yes, as long as they take into account giving you credit for these BMPs. What, what I have seen in their presentation so far is they're going to look at the amount of impervious area. So that would be roofs and paving, things like that. And they're going to base their charges on that. Now, by doing this, you're, you actually are attenuating some of the flows off of there. So you're, you're, you are actually, overall, because of these, you're going to generate less runoff. And so if, if they do, in this, when they establish their ordinance, if they do have ways of giving you credit, or people with, with rain barrels, or people that do, you know, have a rain garden in the front yard, if they do establish some procedures to take that kind of stuff into account, then, then what you manage to do here will get some credit to a lower fee. If they don't take those into account, then they're just going to look at how many square feet of roof and square feet of paving you got. And all the other things that you do might not get credit. So I can't tell you what they're going to do, because they haven't decided.
Mr. Emmett? Comparison statement. Take future mic, Ralph. Comparison statement on routine groundskeeping, when that's up and running in mature condition versus this up around. Lowing, gardening, all of that. Are there any difference, or do you know anything about it?
What you have, these sort of plants, they won't need mowing. Mowing is relatively, you know, if you, if you're mowing some stuff out here, mowing a little bit more doesn't add a whole lot to it. I would say, for the most part, you're not out here maintaining these on a routine, weekly or bi-weekly basis, but you may be out on a three, four, or five times a year basis for a little bit more effort at, at going through, making sure the weed stuff is out and the plants that you wish to thrive have the best conditions available. It's, it's hard to say over the course of a year, how many hours of fertilizing and mowing versus hours of weeding. It's, it may be, it may not be vastly different total numbers of hours. So by, by going to this route, they are going to just have to do different activities, definitely, to maintain these.
Can't hear you, Andrew.
Um, how to go about getting a?
Yeah, how would you figure this out, or can?
If, you certainly will be spending more time for the first couple of years getting it established, to do this versus mowing the lawn. I think the only other way is to do, make contact with, with some folks that have had something established three to five years, and see how many hours they're doing versus what they were doing mowing. It's, I mean, a horticulturist will, will certainly be able to give you an estimate probably on getting things, you know, established and whatnot. But these are, these are, I think, I think having, going to experience, a project experience that has done this, as opposed to, would give us, it could give us a better idea of hours of maintenance for this many acres over the course of a year.
Ah, yes, I have a number of questions and maybe sharing of some information. Coming down from EPA, are everyday new rules and regulations on the handling of stormwater and stormwater management? And all those rules and regulations are going toward best practice management rather than more pipe eating efforts, because of concern about water quality, runoff, sedimentation, et cetera. So that's something that all of us need to be keeping in mind as we make our decision on which way to go in solving this stormwater management. The second aspect is to respond to some of the questions as to how, in best practices, how these plantings survive as weather varies. We've had a drier summer a couple of years ago, we've had very wet summers. When these are planted properly, that's the whole purpose of them, is that they survive under all of these conditions. They have roots that are two feet long, that's the whole purpose of it. It handles any sedimentation, there's very little sedimentation shifting. So that is not a problem. I think care of them, they're usually established in a year. The Robeson rain garden was planted in June. If people go by and look at it right now, it is full and robust. The huge rain garden that was planted at the church on South Dunton is now a year old, and it is very robust, very full, and functioning variously well, because I make a habit when we have one of our rare big rainstorms, which we had one just recently, of going around and looking at how these are working. So those, those issues are really viewed, and we have so many examples now within the community of this kind of approach for drainage that we can look at it. The John Street Watershed Project, we're putting in the rain gardens along New Street in front of the Unit 4 administration building as we speak. That's a whole large rain garden. Two huge rain gardens are going into the New Washington School in Champaign. So we've got lots of examples that everybody can go look at. The next issue I want to address is the acreage that you have assigned there for wetlands. Everybody designs in different ways. I wouldn't have done wetlands, I wouldn't have taken the acreage out of, out of the campus that way. I would have used the ditching, and the ditching would have been the rain gardens, not bioswales, and that would have taken the drainage out. So there are ways to eliminate taking up that acreage and taking that out of potential space that campus might expand. And the last thing I want to address is the assumptions that you laid out for us. Again, the trend now, and where everything is being pushed, is to think green. And your assumptions are such that you haven't folded in any of the green building principles that should be, be followed as the county expands. They did not do it when we put the design building. They laid concrete down on that building, and didn't lay porous concrete, which aggravated that whole area there. Now it's just one big area of concrete, which is making the situation even worse. So as the county builds, they should be thinking of porous concrete systems, other things that help mitigate how much water is going to then be shedded off, whether Urbana gets credit for this or not. That's where EPA is pushing things, and that's where the county is really going to have to start thinking about as we plan ahead for anything that we do on the county campus.
Normally, you associate, oh, sorry. Normally, I associate best management practices with non-point sources of pollution runoff. And the only reason I would say, I would want to spend the money, the difference is if somebody was forcing me to address the issue of a non-point source pollution runoff, I don't know whether we have that problem here, or we will in the future. But this is one of the prime reasons that you would use this type of thing to improve water, water quality.
Just a question. Patty mentioned she wouldn't have used the wetlands. If you eliminated those wetlands, estimate, I realize, because that's not the way you designed it, how much deeper and/or wider would you estimate you'd have to make these swales to make up the difference?
Well, the wetland areas I do have, I'm taking them down in order to create somewhat of detention volume. I have to get those down. So if, if we were to turn these for the time being into more a rain garden, so it's back up at grade, okay, and, and I took that volume out, I don't know if I could give you the, give you that directly, but maybe more indirectly, if, if we increased this pipe size, maybe one pipe size, so that I could, instead of providing some attenuation and volume back here, if I can use more of that volume that was, that's already built, then, then I can probably pretty much, you know, reduce, reduce what I'm doing here if I can, if I can get it over there.
I just wanted to say, it's, you know, a matter of sustainability. For a couple hundred years, the model that we have used for water is to fill it up out of the aquifer and then pump it off to the nearest river and run down to the ocean, and we're emptying out all the aquifers. And this is, what this is about is returning some water to the aquifers instead of pumping it all the way into the ocean.
Other questions?
Well, yes, to answer, to answer that question, yes, that's true. You have, you have, the best management of practices approaches are addressing different goals and for what you're, for what you go for. So, yes, we want to, we want to recharge aquifers. The thing is, we're recharging the shallow aquifers only. We're not recharging our aquifer we get our drinking water from, because that's going to take 10,000 years or 50,000 years to go from ground surface down, you know, 300 feet. So it's, but it's going to recharge the shallower aquifers. We have different layers, and, and all of that is helpful to mitigating the flow. The, the, the streams won't see as large of fluctuations in low flow and flood flow and all. We're, we're trying to put those back at a more even keel like they used to be. Not that average is the goal, but is to put it back more as, as we found it in nature. So it's, it's a kind of a different set of goals. The goal of what we're trying to do here, though, we can't forget, is essentially flood control and, and all. So, so I have done this with an approach where it's hard to, it's hard to compare, you know, apples and hot dogs. I mean, they're, they're so different. So I'm, I'm trying to use these different approaches, though at least, at least all discussing fruit. We still, we're still discussing stormwater management and how to do it. And yes, there are other advantages, other goals and objectives that you can reach using the best management practices that the standard drainage way of doing things do not address. But, but since primarily the effort is improving drainage and managing flood control, and what will, what will regulations be by EPA or by whoever in the future? I don't know. Are they changing? Yes, they are. And how quickly they'll change? I don't know. But we never seem to have less regulation. There's always, there's always something more that we need to be looking at. So that's, that's true for the future. I, there are two other exhibits on the end. This, this is the majority of the approach and the cost estimates there I've provided. But let me, the very tail end, there were two additional questions. Early on is what might we do? The first one is what might we do with that exist, that existing detention base in the western of the two ponds that really doesn't have a finished edge treatment? So I have a little sketch in your, exhibit in your packet there. And on the next page behind it, a brief description of a proposal, of an alternative, and there certainly are a couple of different ways to do it, but keeping this best management practices approach to go back down to normal pool. Situation we have is we have a water level, and then, and then we come up very quickly, about three feet high, within three to five feet. So we have a very steep bank that the concern is about. So if we take that, go down to essentially the normal pool level and excavate back at one in five, a much more gentle slope, and then plant some native plant mixture in that whole area, and install some, include some goose grid in order to keep the geese from finding it. Convenient to get in and out of the pond and, and plant native plants, some plugs, some seeds, some wetland plants along the edge, a few tree structures. We have a little upwards of $40,000 in order to, to. in order to address the perimeter of that western pond. There certainly are other approaches to riprap and some other more standard things, but this was a... And I think we can do for this number a little bit less, but this, in keeping with a BMP application to treating that existing pond. Here's a proposal that Jeff had asked about. And then second, the very last page was under the existing pond that's there that's ringed with a concrete block retaining wall edge, about seven units high. How can we essentially provide an emergency exit from down below to up above? So I prepared a... The very last page is just a sketch to take out a little piece of the wall and essentially move it over and out of the concrete blocks, you know, get a few more blocks and essentially make ourselves stairs to get out. I think we should put it in a place that's not very obvious because it's not access to the water. It's emergency exit from the water. So I'm not trying to create an access point to the water. But something on this order, you know, the materials is fairly minimal. It's more, you know, a week's worth of time for a crew and all, and some materials to just move and do the block walls. So again, I prepared this as one of the questions that Jeff had as a suggestion for what might be relatively easy to do that fits within the confines of what's out there. Yes?
One last question. As you were thinking through this design, did you consider turning those two retention ponds into wetlands?
No. No, I didn't because of the depth of the water is out there already. It's... Obviously, in the edge treatment, we can plant, you know, that riparian area, a little bit in the water, a little bit out. We can plant that with the wetland kind of plants. And then above that, a bit of their native, you know, some vegetation that's going to take into account the differences, the changes in the moisture. But you have ponds out there that essentially are several feet deep. So to really turn those whole essentially lakes into wetlands would require putting fill back in and making them shallower, you know, underwater that they are. So since that was an existing situation and condition, I just took advantage of that and did not suggest making those a wetland. And so there's no resulted cost to do those either.
I understand that. But as a substitute for taking an acreage on your design there with new wetlands, does use the retention ponds?
Well, then I don't gain anything then because you're talking about filling under the water. I mean, my stormwater detention happens from essentially the normal pool elevation up. So if I had six inches of water, six feet of water, or 36 feet of water depth in there, none of that matters, none of that counts for stormwater detention. What stormwater detention counts from the normal pool level up to how deep it's going to get. So nothing I do underwater is going to gain me a thing at all.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask for my own understanding. I know we've been talking about stormwater management for some time. I just wanted to ask two questions. Level urgency for this operation and the existing privately leveled within the infrastructure plan of the county?
I defer to the facilities director for both of those questions because I do not have a... We have answering that. What I will say is, you know, obviously you're not going to choose people A or B tonight. It's there for people to think about, to study. And hopefully next month, we have a discussion which we receive the recommendation. Our facilities director and our administrators for us to act upon. But the two questions that Crow asks, the level of urgency and how it fits in with, and I can catch the other part.
Infrastructure plan of existing.
I do believe the urgent urgency at this point in time, as long as the city of Ravenna knows about working on a stormwater management plan to find with it, they know it will eventually get completed. And there's not a serious issue as we come into a fifth year with your flood and moving our water into animal shelter, maybe other ways or something like that. Who's guess when that's going to happen to make this?
I just asked a follow-up question on this. When you say stormwater management plan, my mind goes to something like R and B, meaning how you want to deal with this water when it comes, kind of thing. This seems to be more the action than the plan. Am I understanding that correctly?
This is... You're looking at implementing a stormwater management plan with a stormwater management project. There are two approaches for you to select from. And this is precipitated by need because of the new building at 202 R Bartell that has been constructed in the last year. And the budget for this stormwater management project is included in that construction project budget as well. So I think we all anticipate that we would get it done by the end of 2012, hopefully. We told the city of Ravenna when we received our approvals that it was being worked on and would be done within a year of that facility being open, right?
Yes, that is correct.
How much did you do a budget?
The budget did right about $450,000.
You just stole my thunder. I wondered how much we bonded, we got to bond out there. How much was that, the $450 was included in that?
So just for clarity here, what I'm hearing is that as a part of getting our permits to build the building, to commit it to the city, that we manage the stormwater generally by the law. So this isn't a question of the county saying, hey, we've got stormwater that we've to take care of. This is we've created a higher demand for stormwater management and this is the resolution that we're going to follow to take care of that. And if we don't, we are not following what we tell the city to do and make the react in some way. I'm not sure how.
The city basically used the 2006 study that the county have about the damage of stormwater, knowing that we would include implementing parts of that plan with this construction.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Back when we were first discussing this, a number of the applicants came in with estimates of like $510,000 for the piping network and $275,000 for a green solution. Is there a green solution that's maybe not quite as best practices? Because everyone was saying that it's going to cost much less. I beg your pardon.
This is strictly this one design and the opinion at the firm we chose to sign for us. There are multiple side possibilities and each firm sure had, presented one, had a different idea. I don't know that we can say right now that, sure, the next design will be half the cost. I cannot answer that.
That's what they were saying at the time, though, wasn't it?
That is what they were saying at the time. That is correct.
Well, then what are our options of investigating that further?
The options as well. That's for this board to decide what it's going to do when it comes time to make the vote, I assume.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to figure out how do we expand the options? All we've got is one. We never had more than one option in the sense of design. We had only one option in the sense of professional requirements.
In order to get the information that you have presented to us this evening, you selected an engineering firm and entered into a contract with that firm to do the work required to provide you with the presentation of information that you have tonight. You went through the QBS selection process to select the engineering firm and engaged in an initial contract with that firm to bring to you the information that you have before you. You have spent $36,400 with this firm to bring to you the information that you have tonight. If you wanted to walk away from this firm, I assume we would have to go back through the QBS process and appropriately select another firm. But it's not like you can get competing recommendations from numerous engineering firms for the same project. If you all remember, we went through that training about how QBS works and it's statutorily required for you when you're doing this type of engineering and architectural work.
Is it possible that we could go back to, say, Burns &amp; Blanks and say, we'd like to have some other part A, part B, something in between, and also they could make us more money? Is that a possibility?
That would be something to be negotiated with Burns &amp; Blanks. They have adhered to the requirements in the contract as it was presented to them. So if you now want to ask them to do additional work on one of the options, I'm sure that's something that you could do.
We would have to start process all over.
That's correct.
Any more questions on bringing water, drainage?
Okay.
If you're on the agenda next month, if you need to get your heads together and figure out what we want to do. Alan?
Thank you. I envy being one monthly reports. On page 15 is our monthly expenditure report. The only thing I'd like to point out is our utilization, which are the two, and it's mine, obviously, as in a fifth line pleasure. We're really close to being right on target at this point in time, along with where we were at last year.
Chairman, any negotiation received in place on files?
No.
Moved by Mr. Jay, seconded by Mr. James. Discussion? All those who favor, signal by this and I?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same motion carries. And the saga of the clock tower?
I'm glad to report that the city hall is now in Rantua at Taylor Studios. The insurance company finally released partial payments and we're often moving. Taylor Studios has ordered materials to repair it. They have submitted an improved design for review. It's been reviewed by professors at the university, by Bruce Hand and Mr. Care Association. They're very happy with their redesign for the added structure they're trying to put into it. Hopefully today or tomorrow, we'll have that final blessing on that. And the estimated time for completion was, other repairs, six to eight weeks. So at that point in time, hopefully we'll have it ready to go back up on top of the clock tower.
You're not just more inviting in a hundred-year flood.
You indicated that the insurance company has released some of the money. So my question is, is the insurance company covered the whole cost or is there some costs that the county will have to cover?
At this point in time, the insurance company has covered all costs that we're aware of. We still have the issue of getting it put back on and we're trying to work on that probably tomorrow and make sure we try to get that ironed out by the soonest rate, ready to go, waiting to finish it.
Anything else to refine?
Okay, I was asked a couple of months ago, it is budget time again, and I have once again supplied you with a building efficiency summary report for the courthouse in Brookings. Now, you may ask why I'm just using those two buildings? Well, because getting all, putting all the information for all of the seven of the major buildings together is a possibility. I just not happy to know if to do that. Other than the, on page 20 is a summary. I would like to point on the following pages. Twenty-one and twenty-two are the actual spreadsheets where I worked on. Comparing last year to this year in utilities and gas also is very difficult. Last year, we did not have a contract in place for the Alice procurement program, which we started in eight, 2010. And that's for the natural gas. So we've got three months of non-regulated and several months of purchasing gas, natural gas, under the program. Electricity, we went from one contract, three months of, two months of one contract into a brand-new contract. Building was completely different on electricity. Rains changed. The only thing that's consistent on these spreadsheets are the actual terms and kilowatt hours used. So it's going to be really hard to compare from last year to this year. I just want to make sure you understand that. On the summary sheet, total cost per square foot, which was the number that was used in the first two years I gave in the reports. We are continuing to lower the cost per square foot in both the Brookings and courthouse for the gas, natural gas, and really holding pretty close for the cost per square foot for electricity. I did try to incorporate cooling degree days onto this report to give you reference because our cost in usage is actually relevant to the outside temperature. And what I was not able to do is try to give you an actual, exact cost of the kilowatt hours per cooling degree days or the terms per heating degree days year to year. I was only able to go back three years on the website I was using to calculate previous year and a half report. Very close, though, I can say that as an indicator, Brookings, we went from $7.29, excuse me, terms, 7.29 terms per heating degree day in a Brookings building. And 2010, '09, '10, we're now at Brookings, we're at 8.02 terms per heating degree day. So we just went up just a little bit for that. Our actual cost per square foot went down. The actual terms per heating degree day went up. So it's almost too much information, let me know. If you have any questions, I'll try to explain it for you.
Actually, you have data that we can, like electrical use that we had made improvements. I'm looking at the courthouse. I think the courthouse has more consistent use than, say, Brookings. Because Brookings has various needs that occur not on a regular basis, like, you know, Santa comes in here more often. So our electricity use sure has varied. The courthouse can be pretty consistent because it basically opens from eight o'clock in the morning to five at night. And I'm looking at the pair '09 and '10 to 2010, '11. Looking at the cooling degree days, they were 11:24 in '09, '10. Look at '10 and '11, they were 16:33. That's a 45% increase. But the increase in kilowatt hours per square foot was only 10%. That means you had a big improvement in your efficiency.
That is correct.
I'm interested in when you, since you've been working very hard on improving the efficiency in all the buildings, what do you feel are the two things that you've done that have contributed to these savings?
The most important thing we have done, well, the two major things we have done to contribute to savings on the electricity, kilowatts, is we... We installed licensors, motion sensors, time switches in the courthouse and Brookings. So in all the offices and anyplace we could. Here at the Brookings building, we removed the large metal heavy gymnasium lights and replaced it with high-efficiency T8s. And at the courthouse also, if you remember, a year and a half ago, we had to have a new building management system installed where we crashed. building management system installed for refresh, so we've got that back up and running. That has made a big difference there. So those are the two major things we've accomplished in the last two and a half years.